I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Taylor, Ms. Barada, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Dorski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
We have a number of Cub Scouts with us, and I'd like to invite them up to lead the pledge. If you want to come on up and lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's been about the last hour visiting with them, so very impressive, and thank you very much. Thanks for the leaders for all that you do with the Scouts as well. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a special presentation tonight. I think it's the first time we've done this. But the school district, you might have been hearing in the news lately, is looking at a potential bond issue in the spring, and they're starting to figure out what that might be and getting out into the public and listening, and realizing that almost everything we do is building of houses and streets. It's got an impact on the schools. I thought it'd be good for us to hear directly from the school on what they're currently planning, just more educational for us. And knowing a lot of people, if they have a question, they don't know, should they call the city or the schools? So I figure some of the council members might actually get questions. So if you heard it firsthand from the school, you at least might be able to give a little bit of basic information and then get it back to the source if there's questions. So Dr. Rickley, I'd like to invite you up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Happy Tuesday, everyone, and thank you for inviting us here. As Mayor Black indicated, it's not often that the school district is asked to present to this council, so we're deeply honored. I've got two people seated behind me that may help out. If you have any questions that I have some difficulty answering, Mr. Brett Richards, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, and Sue Ann Witt, who is a school board member. I want the council to know, and I'm sure you know this, but the relationship that the school district has with the city and Mayor Black and all of you is critically important. We have a terrific relationship on everything from law enforcement to collaboration on projects, and it's a relationship that we deeply value, and I hope you do as well. So without further ado, we'll try to keep this to about 15 minutes. As Mayor Black indicated, we have a proposal regarding facilities. We haven't said exactly when that election may be, but as Mayor Black indicated, we're looking potentially as early as next spring. So what we'll be focusing on as we go through this this evening, if I can get this to advance, maybe I'll do this, do it the old-fashioned way, maybe. So one of the things that we're working on, thank you, Taylor. Down, down. Awesome, thank you. So there's three questions that we're putting before the community and our staff. And we've hit about two-thirds of our staff, and we've hit about, yeah, maybe 25% of our school buildings with parents. But we're asking three primary questions. One, should there be a bond issue? Yes or no? We think that there should be. We wouldn't be having this conversation otherwise, but we want to make sure that our community agrees. Second of all, the timing of a potential bond issue. We know that, given all the uncertainty in the world right now with midterm elections, we have a country that's potentially headed for a recession. We have inflationary pressures which are near double digits. These are tough times for people, and we want to be mindful of that before we talk about projects that have potential tax implications. And finally, we're trying to talk about what those projects should be if we decide to move forward. So there's been a number of conversations we've had prior to getting to this point. First off, we've commissioned a study from RSP. It's a firm out of Overland Park, Kansas, and what they do all day, every day, is work with public school districts to determine what their short-term enrollment trends may look like as well as what the long-term trends will look like. Because as a growing school district, if our population is growing, as you'll see it is, particularly at the elementary level, that has implications for our facilities. We've also met with our principals, buildings, and grounds, which is a subcommittee of our Board of Six, personnel, and BCDM, which are our architect partners. What we did last spring in preparation of this conversation is we met with the buildings that we anticipated needed some work. And we met with their principals, we met with their staff, we met with their teachers, and we said, "This is what we think needs to happen, but you live in these buildings, and you know better than we do what needs to be addressed." So we had some productive conversations there, collected some data, and shared that with our Board of Education. Going back to our 2018 bond issue, which was the last bond issuance that the district did, it was $199 million, the largest in district's history, passed with just under 70% of the voters turning out and saying yes. And we focused on three primary areas. We focused on safety and security, making sure that all of our facilities had equal standards of greatness, which we'll get to in just a bit, and we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate that growing student population that I referenced earlier. Safety and security, there's a number of things that we're proposing in this bond initiative. We want to make sure all 21 buildings, not just the buildings listed in the PowerPoint, but all 21 buildings are receiving upgrades in the area of safety and security. For example, we know that our door control access systems need to be updated, and we need a comprehensive approach to do that. So for example, all of our doors have cameras, buzzers, and most of them have badged entry systems, but we don't have a unified system to track who's coming and going in a manner that we're comfortable with. That's something that we want to address. The network behind all of these electronic gadgets and monitoring systems also needs to be updated because as we build, as we add more students, as we add more door locks, as we add more cameras, that puts a strain on our networks. We want to make sure we have the right backbone in place. And lastly, bulletproof film. This is something that none of us want to contemplate, but we know that school shootings happen everywhere. We've had them happen here in the metro, and anything we can do to slow down an active shooter, once they enter our property, is going to save lives. So we're talking about adding bulletproof film to all of our front entryways. And finally, we have five elementary buildings that do not have a complete controlled access entryway. All of our buildings have buzzers, cameras, and locking mechanisms, but not all of our buildings have a mechanism by which students or visitors enter a vestibule and then get routed to the front office before being released into the instructional area. So we're going to make sure that that is fixed with the five remaining buildings. Growth, we've referenced this a couple of times. This is a chart maybe you've seen before. This shows the district's enrollment going back to 1990, and it shows our student enrollment. The three colors represent the three grade spans, elementary, middle school, high school. And what you will find is over our 32-year history, at least the 32 years we're tracking on this slide, is that the district's average growth constitutes about 2.3% per year. You'll see there have been a couple of points in the district's history where the enrollments dipped slightly and where it's plateaued, but for the most part, you see very steady growth, 2% or more. Which for a district of our size, with 12,000 students, we're the fourth-largest public school district in the state of Nebraska. That constitutes about 200 to 300 students per year. You will see something very noteworthy that happened in 2019, which is no mystery to any of us in here. When the pandemic hit, the district saw a net loss of about 300 students. And what happened in most cases is parents pulled their kids during the pandemic. They homeschooled them, and in some cases, they never brought them back. Not a trend that we're happy with, but we certainly understand with as much fear as in the community across the country why parents made that decision. The good news is, as you can see from the trend line, is that we're starting to pick up with the growth again. This represents the RSP study that I referenced earlier, again, elementary, middle school, high school. If you focus on the top two bars, the yellow and the light gray, you'll notice something striking about our growth, and that is our middle school and our high schools are basically stable. You're not going to see massive growth at either the middle level, which for us is grades seven and eight, or the high school, which is grades nine through 12. Growth is occurring, however, at the elementary level. So when you look at our current elementary population, 5,917 students spread across 16 elementary buildings, that's projected to grow to approximately 6,600 students in the next five years. That's why we're going to build a new elementary building, or at least propose to build one. This represents the school district boundaries. We're approximately 27 square miles. We encompass the city of Papillion, La Vista, and a section of Bellevue, as the council is aware. Heavy purple line represents our boundary. The heavy gray line in the middle that bisects the district is the high school attendance line. North of the line, you're Monarch; south of the line, you're Titan. The colors that jump off the map show you what you already know. You are very plugged into this community. You know where the growth is occurring. It's that 370 corridor, north and south. That's where we're seeing dirt get scraped and rooftops spring up. That's why we're focusing on those areas in particular as we think about expansions at current buildings as well as new elementary buildings. So, growth projects, what are we going to do to address this? A new elementary school, that will be number 17, East of Liberty Middle School. Purchase additional land for middle school and an additional elementary. With the board's philosophy being, if we don't need that land, if the growth does slow down to the point where we no longer need to build new buildings, not likely, but possible, we can always sell that land. And as a general rule, we need 40 acres for middle school and about 12 to 14 acres for an elementary building. Technology infrastructure, without boring you with the details, you know that as the district grows, more students are added to our system, more teachers are added to our system, more devices are entering our buildings. That puts a strain on our architecture, so we want to make sure our technology is up to speed. Number of elementary projects, which I'll run through really quickly. Three of our older buildings, Parkview Trumbull, Terra, these are buildings, for the most part, that were built in the 50s. We want to make sure the classrooms have the same size as our brand-newest building, Ashbury Elementary. We want to go from about 650 square feet per classroom to about 800, 850. Interior renovations, infrastructure improvements, and playground updates. Some of our buildings have rubber under their playground equipment, some do not. That's a safety issue, and we know that that needs to be addressed. Four other buildings, Hickory Walnut, Patriot, Portal, and Bell. Five other buildings, excuse me, want to do the safety and security improvements, including that controlled access entryway that I described earlier. We'll put a finishing kitchen in those buildings, which gives students an extra choice, and it cuts down on waste in terms of, we're no longer using plastic cutlery, for example, styrofoam plates, and make sure the interior updates get freshened up. Middle school, this bond really does focus mainly on elementary and middle school. Liberty Middle School will not be addressed in this proposed bond because it's a brand-new building, and we're already adding some space there. So this will largely focus on Papillion Middle School, La Vista Middle School. Science room renovation, and we're going to reconfigure some learning center space to address our students with disabilities. La Vista Middle does not have a counseling center like Papillion Middle does. We will address that. Interior renovations, infrastructure improvements, both tracks need to be replaced. Not resurfaced, but replaced. They're both in excess of 20 years old. High school, we did most of our heavy lifting with the high school on the 2018 bond. We spent about $25 million apiece on both Monarch and Titan. They are gorgeous buildings. We would love to have the council visit if you like. The fine arts, the auditorium in both buildings, need some attention. Monarch in particular, Titan is in a little bit better shape, but both of them need some work in the area of stage, the stage floor, seating, sound and lights. And bullets two and three, this represents opportunities for our kids that we're really excited about. As the council's probably well aware, we put in a turf space, a P.E. classroom at South out of the 2018 bond that created a little bit of dissension in the school district, as you may have heard. What we found out, though, very clearly, is it created new opportunities for students at South that we're very excited about. But we think that those opportunities that it created at South can also be replicated at Monarch. Likewise, we put in a dedicated space at Monarch that Titan didn't get in the 2018 bond. A flex classroom space, in fact, it just opened up about a week and a half ago. Dedicated space for sports, activities, academies. So basically, what we're proposing is the turf space that Titan has, we want to replicate at Monarch. The flex space that Monarch has, we want to replicate at Titan. And then do some updates at baseball, softball, which should be of particular interest to the board. Before we get to that, though, the YETP, it's our Young Adult Transition Program. It serves students 18 to 21, students with disabilities who are in transition. We need a dedicated space for them. We are outgrowing our space, which is rented on Gold Coast Road. Finances, this is something that's very important to us. If we would follow through with the bond projects that we just outlined, we can do it without any increase on the mill levy. Why? Because we have a large bond falling off the district's balance sheet. And the question we get is, well, are you just taking the debt that you had and pouring every penny you can back into new projects? And the answer is no. I believe, based on the preliminary work that Mr. Richards has done, with the old debt being retired, we could have asked up to $160 million, give or take, without a tax increase. But we want to be mindful of our taxpayers' needs, and again, we're experiencing some very challenging times, all of us, in the current economic situation. Keeping in mind that these funds can only be used for facilities and construction. We often hear, well, can you go ahead and turn around these dollars and put them into teacher salaries? And the answer is no. That has to be funded through the general fund. So when you add up all the projects I just talked about, it comes under, just under $130 million. When we estimated these costs as recently as eight months ago, it was closer to $100 million. But as you all know, with supply chain issues coupled with skyrocketing building and construction costs, that number has moved upward in a short amount of time. So that's where we stand. I apologize if I went over the 15 minutes. But with that, I would gladly answer any questions from the mayor or the council.
It wasn't a hard 15 minutes, but I appreciate that, especially for the people that follow on the agenda. Mr. Mumgaard.
Okay, I'm looking at the map of the district boundaries, and I'm particularly interested down in the southeast corner, down around 72 Place. We've been approving several Platts and developments down there in the 72 Place area. And I would anticipate they start building fairly soon. But I see in there, and tell me if I'm misunderstanding this, that that, does that area have land purchased for a future school?
Thank you, Mr. Mumgaard. The answer is yes. So as part of the 2018 bond issuance, we committed to purchasing land for the third high school. Now, given those enrollment projections we shared earlier, we're not going to need that third high school for this bond issuance. I think we're at least one bond out. But given that we need 80 acres, we purchased about 85, 86, we wanted to do that while we could still find a parcel that big. And as we all know, those parcels of land are not going to be here in 10 years. So we purchased it. It's just south of 72nd and 370. So to give you a little bit of a context, you've got Cobalt Credit Union. You have a housing development immediately south of Cobalt Credit Union. And then when you go directly south of that housing development where they're scraping dirt right now, that's where the district property sits. That's where the third high school will be built.
Well, okay, if I'm reading, tell me which way I should read this. Is that tier one, zero to five years, or tier three, 10 to 20 years?
So, Mr. Richards, I may need some help on this one. So 70, so I wonder, do I have a laser pointer here? Okay, so we got 72nd and 370 there. So you've got Cobalt Credit Union. I believe this area here, Mr. Mumgaard, is where they are scraping dirt right now. This area here, Mr. Richards, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where the 80 acres is that'll be eventually our third high school.
Oh, excuse me, in the yellow or the orange?
Well, I see that as yellow, but is it orange? Help me out here. All right, thank you.
And I look at that, you've identified that as 10 to 20 years from now.
So we try to be really conservative with our estimates, and some of this is based on what we're hearing from developers. I would take these three colors, the red, orange, and yellow with a grain of salt because there's so many things that I don't need to tell you about because you're more plugged in than I am. But with the wastewater treatment facility, for example, with, so that's working to our benefit that may speed these things up. And on the other hand, you have rising interest rates which may slow down housing development. So you have all of these different moving parts and pieces. These are not hard and fast numbers in terms of zero to five, five to 10. But given the best data that we have from the developers we're meeting with, that's kind of how we're projecting it. I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, well, I guess when I saw the 10 to 20 years, I guess that kind of bothered me because of the number of developers that have been showing interest in that area. Okay, now a question about your growth. Why is it that the elementary is going to grow, but the middle and high school doesn't?
You know, it's a really interesting question, and the short of it is, we don't know. But here's what we do know. We know that this is my 10th year as your superintendent, and we were seeing very consistent 2%, 2.5% growth up until about 2017. So we were seeing some trends even before the pandemic, and I think the pandemic accelerated some things. Our theory is that because of the nature and price point of some of our homes, that that's having a direct impact on where the growth is coming and the age of kids that we're drawing in. Because we are starting to see more expensive homes. There's not a lot of startup homes in that $250,000 range. We think that that's going to have an impact, not only on housing patterns, but the age ranges of the kids that we're attracting and seeing in the district for the first time. I don't have any empirical data to back that up, Mr. Mumgaard, but we think that that's part of what we're seeing in terms of why we're still seeing growth at the elementary level, but the middle level and high school is stalling out. Now, the middle school level stalling out is pretty easily explainable from the sense that we only have two grade levels in middle schools. Most school districts do a six, seven, eight grade configuration. Middle school, we're only seven, eight. So as a result of that, you're just transitioning kids in and out. So we're not as concerned about that. We're really keeping an eye on those elementary numbers, though, which is why that 600-student increase we're projecting to see is kind of spurring the.
Well, if you're right about that, then I guess that's something we need to pay more attention to because we can do something about it, but you can't. I, well, I hope, I looked at that, does that mean that people move out when their kid hits, you know, middle school and high school? They say, "I can't stand this town anymore. I'm out of here?"
You know, I don't think that's the case at all. And all of the data that we, and we do a parent and staff survey every single year where we talk about things, about are you pleased with the community? Are you pleased with the school district? How would you rate the Papillion-La Vista Community Schools? We don't have any evidence from our end that people are getting ticked off and leaving. What we do think may be happening, and this is anecdotal, but what may be happening is people that are already here, living in potentially a $250,000, $300,000 house, are wanting to stick around and stay in the school district, and they're moving into a $450,000, $500,000 house. That has implications for our enrollment as well. Again, some of this is just conjecture, so your guess is as good as mine, but we're going to continue to keep a close eye on the data and work with RSP to make sure we're getting the mark right.
It's something we should pay attention to.
No question.
Yeah, a couple things. One would be with regard to growth. You already talked about housing trends, and so we're seeing multifamily. We're seeing villas, which would indicate to me that it's probably a single person, maybe a couple, or, you know, maybe empty nesters. What material impact does that have on your estimates? And the other question is with regard to your boundaries. The boundaries, obviously, the one on the north side, Harrison Street, are pretty fixed. Are the other boundaries pretty much fixed, or is that still some room for change with the other budding?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Stube. I'll take the boundary question first. So you can see that the heavy purple line, that's our current boundary. And you're like, well, why are you showing us colors that are in the Springfield-Platteview Community Schools? Thanks to the good work of our Assistant Superintendent Brett Richards, who was the superintendent in that school district, we put together a boundary agreement. I think we decided it was about five, six years ago, Brett. And the long and short of the boundary agreement is this, that that land north of Capeport, while it's currently in Springfield-Platteview, and it's currently raw undeveloped farmland for the most part, recognizing it was a political compromise at the time when we were trying to get rid of the common levy, which helps this school district and this community a lot, that Springfield-Platteview agreed to, once that land north of Capeport is developed by developers, it will transfer into the Papillion-La Vista Community Schools. We don't pay for it, meaning the school district or our taxpayers, the developer does. And that's a good thing for the school district because that allows us to have a growing tax base. That's a good thing for a school district. And developers like it because in many cases, we have school buildings that are more proximate than what Springfield-Platteview would have. So for example, some of that yellow on the southeast side, just outside the district, that's just a half a mile from Bell Elementary, for example. Springfield-Platteview wouldn't necessarily have an attendance center that close. So we think that this is good for kids, it's good for developers, it's good for both school districts. Going back to your question about housing developments, we can tell you at a very granular level how many kids are going to come out of a household at each one of our neighborhoods and communities. District-wide, the average is about 0.6 kids per house. So for every, for every house, a single unit family dwelling, you get about half a kid. For apartment buildings and townhomes, it's about 0.25, which is a little bit counterintuitive, but as you start to think about the types of apartment complexes we're attracting in this area, very often it's dual-income, no kids, young affluent people. They can afford some of the rents. They don't bring a lot of kids. So contrary to public opinion, when you see apartment buildings coming in, at least to this school district, we're not seeing a lot of kids come out, not a lot of school-aged kids. For every four apartments, we're seeing one kid. I hope that answers your question.
Thanks again. Appreciate it a lot. And more for the public, the council's got no votes or input into the process, but because we do deal with apartments and housing, sometimes we get school questions. So I thought it was important after we had the presentation. So again, thank you very much. Do you want to share when the community meetings are? Because we broadcast these, so a lot of people are going to see our meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Kluk. So the question was, when are our community meetings? So every one of our 16 elementary buildings will have one. That information is posted on the district website. We'll host our first community forum this Thursday, Papillion-La Vista South, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. All are welcome. You don't have to go to Papillion-La Vista South. You can live in the north, you can live in the south. Our second forum will be a week from Thursday, which is October 27th. Monarch, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Again, all are welcome. You can come to one or both. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Powers, administrators report, please.
Thank you. As you know, city cleanup days is happening now, and that's through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day. So hope to spread that word. And those who haven't heard, Fire Chief Bill Bowes has announced his retirement. His last day with the city is tentatively scheduled for March 31st, and the process to find his replacement has already started. The Civil Service Commission met last night and approved the process, and it will be a similar process to what we did with Police Chief last year. In the position, will be posted tomorrow if it's not already posted. And our goal is to have someone in that position by the beginning of March so they can train with Chief Bowes that last month that he's here. And then some exciting events that are coming up. The final two Friday night bites for the season will be this Friday, and then October 28th, both at the Landing, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Might be a little chilly. You might want to bundle up. The Baseball Halloween is also this Friday at Warner Park. It starts at 5:00 p.m., and it's free admission. And the Papillion Recreation Department is hosting their annual Halloween Safe Night, October 27th, and that's at Papillion-La Vista South High School. And finally, the Downtown Business Association's annual Spook and SIP is October 28th, and the event is sold out, and it sure sounds like it'll be a great time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Kluk. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven aces, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item E1, Ordinance 1979. An ordinance to amend the Papillion Municipal Code, Section 117.4 and 117.11, to revise the number of fireworks sales licenses, to amend fireworks regulations, and to provide for an effective date. It is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? See none? I'll close the public hearing. And we'll make a note, we did get one email in. I think council members all have a copy of that, and we'll make sure that's recorded in the minutes. Item F1, Resolution R220174, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Shadow Lake Town Center Mixed Use Development Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220174? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven aces, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R220178. A resolution to approve a cable franchise agreement between the city of Papillion and ALO Papillion LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R220178? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Ingberg. Proponents? ALO is here. Welcome. And normally, you know, we usually give people about two or three minutes for presentations, but this one is a big enough important deal for the history of Papillion. I think we said you can take as long as you want, so, and if you'd state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lincoln, 330 South 21st Street, 68510. Thank you. I do have a handout here, if that's okay. And hopefully, I brought enough. So excited tonight to be in front of you all. And I think it's not often that I get to get up and speak for a franchise approval like tonight, but we're excited to bring our all-fiber utility to the residents and businesses of Papillion, Nebraska. I think it's an excellent fit for us. You have an outstanding community, and we just want to make it just a little bit better. Thank you. You do have it loaded. Okay, thank you. So a little bit about ALO. We're basically a company that was founded in 2003 by Brad Moline out in Imperial, Nebraska. Brad had the foresight to see that Western Nebraska was getting left behind when it came to being served by the local incumbents of the area. Businesses were not getting the connectivity they needed or to do the business. Students were getting left behind because they weren't able to access the internet. It was just something that Brad was able to gather the right partners and start investing and bringing fiber to those communities. So as a result... So, as a result, um, uh, his vision is growing into, uh, what ALO is today. And what that is, is we're a ubiquitous fiber provider. We come into cities and basically we extend fiber to every home and business in that city. We just don't do selected fiber hoods or, uh, cherry pick business districts or those type of things. We really believe in helping close the digital divide, which I think is very important, especially after listening to the school's presentation here. We'll talk more about how we, we, um, can help, um, disadvantaged families with some of our programs. We, we are privately funded. Uh, we use, uh, NellNet and SDC Partners, um, to bring our capital for the build, so we're not here asking for a handout or anything like that to, to bring our network to, um, Papillion. And, um, this, this strategy has really paid off for us. Today, I, I'm really proud to say that, uh, that the team of, of ALO has been able to, uh, build, uh, over two dozen markets, and we pass over a million in population today. Much of our success comes from just our values. This is how we do business. It sounds kind of weird to say, but, um, I'll, I'll just go through some examples here, and I think it'll demonstrate why these four core values are really so sincere to us. Because it starts with honesty. Um, you can go out to her website, you can see pricing in all our communities. That's what our, uh, residents pay for services. We're local. We believe in having people in market, being part of the community, participating in community events. Uh, it's, it's really a key to bridging the gap between our customers and, and really making a difference from our competitors. So, we'll have a local storefront in Papillion. Um, we'll probably have close to three dozen employees here. Um, they'll be installers, they'll be, uh, folks doing customer service, they'll also be locators. So, if there's a problem in the middle of the night, we have people here to fix it. And I think that's a, again, another important way we differentiate ourselves. We strive to be exceptional in everything we do. Our networks are world-class. Uh, we'll talk a little bit later about all the awards we won and the speeds, but, um, it's needless to say that the technology we're deploying here is the best that's out there, and the speeds that you'll realize to your residents and businesses are, are, are second to none. And then lastly, we're hassle-free. Um, we, we strive and, and we pride ourselves on the fact that, um, we don't do gimmicks to try to create customers. We don't do zero, um, free service for X number of months and then kind of stick it to people at the, uh, the end of the contract term. In fact, we don't even do contracts. So, this strategy's worked well. Uh, we've grown to 1,267 employees and continue growing. Um, we're adding roughly 200 to 300 employees a year right now, uh, just through this organic market growth that we're talking about. Um, today, we serve 120,000 customers across our markets, um, and we're adding, uh, between 400 and 1,000 customers every week. We also serve a pretty diverse, um, uh, size of, of cities. Uh, our smallest, uh, market today is Bridgeport, Nebraska, roughly 1,500, uh, population. And then our largest is Lincoln, Nebraska, that's, uh, close to 300,000 in population. We also win lots of awards for our, our network speeds and our customer service. I'll talk a little bit more about that here on another coming slide. Where we serve and where we're building at today, uh, you heard me speak about Nebraska. You can see, uh, we've kind of built across, starting at Western Nebraska towards the eastern side, so it, it's really exciting to get to the far side of the state now and be able to bring our services to Papillion and the greater Omaha area. We're also, uh, we built some markets and continue to build markets in Colorado and, and establish our footprint there. Um, and we're currently building markets in Arizona, and, uh, we also have some middle-mile projects that we're building there as well. As far as our residential, um, products that we offer, uh, we're a full-service provider. Um, we, we offer, uh, super fast internet over our all-fiber network. Basically, we offer three speeds today. It's 500 megabits per second, one gig, and a 2.5 gigabit offering. Our network is future-proof, so it will go much faster in the future. Just to give you an idea, the electronics we're deploying today will support 10 gigabits to the home. So, as applications come out that will have people wanting those speeds, we're already in a position to deliver those. We also offer a, a linear TV product with all the channels that you've come to expect, um, with set-top boxes, um, and, um, very competitive pa- packages there. And then lastly, um, we offer, um, crystal-clear, um, voice service as well. On the business side, uh, we're a full-service business provider. Uh, we offer, uh, all the services that you can go to any of the big guys and, and buy as well. Again, we, we, uh, go from small. We have, uh, single-phone businesses, uh, this is out there in, in volume, and we go big. Uh, our largest business customer has close to 30,000 stations. As far as speed, um, the latest, uh, PC Magazine polls are out. We fared very well there. We're always very near the top of all the speed tests. One thing I, I didn't talk about on the earlier slide was, we offer a, a, a product that we think helps close the digital divide. So, um, all our speeds are symmetrical, up and down speeds. This is a 100-megabit product that is fully subsidized just to, to help close the gap. Reason for talking about on this slide is it, you're probably running through mind, gee, Al, you're telling me how great you are, but you're not number one. Those, because we're, we offer, uh, these, these lower-speed services to help close the gap, that hurts us in the speed tests a little bit. As far as our customer service, um, we pride ourselves on being a customer service organization. We like to measure ourselves. We use the Net Promoter Score, uh, to do that. Basically, we ask, uh, our customers, how likely are you recommend us to a friend? Um, anybody who answers eight, nine, or 10 on a survey, we call that a plus one. If they answer a seven, it's basically a push or a zero. And six or below, we count as a minus one. So, um, we consistently score in the high 60s today, um, with, with that approach. Seventy is considered world-class, uh, just so everyone knows, so we, we're, we're really pushing hard to get there. As far as closing the digital divide, the Affordable Connectivity Program, um, came at a federal level. We participated in that from the beginning. Um, it's basically that hundred-by-hundred symmetrical offering, so for disadvantaged families, what it means is that if their kids, let's say, have subsidized lunches at school, they're more than likely going to, uh, qualify for this program. As far as the, the build itself, it, it's all about building a partnership with, with, uh, your experts locally. We want to get the right design out there. We want it to be super safe. Um, all our designs are safe. It, it starts with, uh, basically the discussions with your experts. From there, we, we work with OPPD on permitting the pole lines, um, making sure that we have the proper clearances. Uh, we do load analysis to make sure it's safe there. The underground construction, uh, along the routes where the pole lines are not available, we use directional boring to minimize restoration, uh, for the residents and businesses. The last thing I, I probably need to mention too is as far as drop placements, that connection from the structure at the lot line of the home or business over to the house, we put those in as, as services ordered. So, even though construction will be complete in, let's say, 18 to 24 months of the network, we'll be placing drops, excuse me, um, uh, across, uh, the footprint for some years to come because of that. So, why ALO? I think it starts with our local presence. We're going to have a storefront, we're going to have our employees here, we're going to be part of your community. And then, from that, we become just a good economic partner. We're going to be paying, uh, you know, lots of property taxes, we're going to be paying franchise fees, and we really want to work with your experts, again, to bring new businesses to your community or help bring those businesses in. You know, Papillion's a great place to be, and we really want to be part of that. So, with that, I'd love to answer any questions you all have about our project.
Just a couple of quick questions. Um, I think it's been said publicly, and if it hasn't, and you don't want to share, feel free to say no. The amount of private investment you're bringing into Papillion?
Yeah, i- it's going to be roughly a, a 30 to 35 million dollar investment for us.
Thank you on that. Um, again, I think it's important for people to realize it is a Nebraska-based company, um, so we're buying local in this case. And then you mentioned it briefly, you're, as, as part of the build-out, hitting the entire city, um, going in the right-of-way, in front of a house, but not making the actual connection to a house. But if I remember right from our conversations, um, when somebody signs up for service and now you're bringing the fiber from the street to their house, you're not charging for that connection.
That, that is absolutely correct.
Part of your private investment as well.
Yep, yep. We don't charge for installations, we don't charge for, uh, extending drops, we don't charge for the modem, we don't charge for the O-N-T.
No, and then the, uh, program where you're helping the disadvantaged, uh, people with free-to-reduce lunch or Pell Grants or something like that. I think there is a federal requirement on the amount of that subsidy, but you go beyond that?
That is correct.
Talk about that just a little bit more.
Yeah, um, I don't have the numbers memorized, but, um, we basically pick up the tab for the difference between what's subsidized and the cost of the service, because we just feel it's the right thing to do. You know, I, I think that, again, because we're local, uh, our, our employees are part of the community, um, you know, everybody just wants to help, and this is a great way to give back.
So, again, if I understand it right, so if we get somebody who's maybe low-income in the community and they're paying a high price for an existing service, and, um, they can use, they can live with that 100 megabits up and down, um, with that subsidy, they'll be, basically, they'll have the opportunity to get free service.
That is correct.
So, huge, huge impact to our disadvantaged, uh, with this as well. Mr. Stube?
Yeah, a couple questions. One would be, I think you already answered that you're looking at a build-out of 18 to 24 months, correct?
Correct.
So, are you looking at starting in one location and kind of building out, or are you looking at multiple locations that you're going to be working in?
That is an excellent question. So, what, what we do is when we come in, we break the city up into grids, and where we'll find property for our central office. Basically, it's a prefab structure. It's about 12 feet by 30 foot in size. Looks very similar to a cell tower, uh, building. And inside goes our, our electronics. We want to build the area around that first, and then also, uh, we permit out, uh, what we call the feeder routes, which connect these grid areas together. And, um, by basically taking that approach, we kind of build a core infrastructure, we get it connected up. We're able to basically, uh, take the first shovel in the ground then, and have those first customers online in this first area in roughly 90 to 120 days.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, is that this is an agreement within the city limits, and therefore, your focus is on the city limits. Are, are you proposing to look at the ETJ also? I, I'm assuming you're going to focus on us first and then consider the, the, uh, the outside area.
You are correct. What, what our, what our strategy is, and, and it's not unique to Papillion, is we try to build out the area inside the city limits first, and then we'll edge out after that. So, um, I, I don't think it's a secret. We'll reach out to the county and get a, get a kind of an inner, I forget what it's called. It's an agreement that allows us then to start talking to the SIDs that are outside the city limits with the idea that we'll want to incorporate them into the ALO network, uh, over time as well.
And we're plugging into those conversations a little bit too, so we make sure that the agreement that they've got with the county and the SIDs, when we do the annexation, it's a logical fit.
Very good. Uh, last question I have is from the perspective of when crews actually start moving into my neighborhood and start tearing up my grass, what kind of effort are you putting forth relative to communicating with those property owners ahead of time and letting them know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're going to, uh, when we complete it, this is what it's going to look like? What, can you talk to us a little bit about that?
You bet. Um, it all starts kind of upfront. Um, we do media blasts. Um, as, as the engineering teams come through to, uh, start acquiring the poll data like I was talking about earlier, they'll, they'll put, uh, they'll, they'll door knock first, uh, to, to let folks know that they're coming. A lot of times, we don't get a lot of response at the door, so we'll leave a door tag saying, "We were here, this is what we were doing", just to kind of help educate the public. Um, that way, if somebody says, "Hey, there's a stranger in the backyard", you, you know why somebody was there. And throughout the construction process, it's kind of the same, the same tone there, where whenever we're work, trying to, whenever we're doing work in somebody's yard, we'll door knock, um, and we'll leave a door tag that we were there with a number to call. If, if, you know, something's tore up, something's broken, uh, it is construction. Typically, we'll be going down the, uh, the back easement areas, uh, in, in the subdivisions. Um, we try to build our new utility in a very consistent manner with the existing utilities. So, what that means is our structures will be next to where the transformer and those pedestal structures are in the backyards today. Or if it's a front feed area, we'll try to place our structures right next to where those are today. It just is, the, you know, the, what our philosophy is, is that we have learned that we, we need to keep from making the residents and the businesses mad during the construction process, because we want them to be our customers at the end of the construction process. So, we put a lot of effort into trying to educate folks. Um, we also have a website up that, um, will track. People can report directly if they have a problem to that. Um, we'll have signs up with, with numbers as well that they can call in addition to the door tags. Um, we try to give calling trees to the city folks because we really want it to be our project, but we also know that you all have friends who's going to call you and, and say, "Hey, I've got a problem", so what we would ask is if you can try to channel those back to us. Um, our process is, we'll have ALO, uh, we'll have an ALO construction expert who's built many markets before. His name's Ed Jarrett. He'll be over the construction of Papillion. Under him, he'll have QC people that are ALO paycheck employees as well, watching our contractor. I think it'll be Bauer Engineering, uh, or, excuse me, Bauer Construction doing the construction here. So, again, an, another Nebraska contractor doing work here. They've, they've built many markets for us, they know what we expect, and they know how to do it the right way. So that we're not going to leave holes open overnight, that's not our way. We want it to be very safe. Uh, we don't want anybody to get hurt in the process. Uh, if we have a sidewalk closure, we're going to have up deter signs for that, uh, enclosed off properly, pure, um, uh, highway control manual, uh, same with all the, the city streets. We'll have to periodically, you know, close a lane to do potholing to find the existing utilities. Part of the way we make it safe is, um, everything that we're boring, uh, we find every utility and make sure it's exposed before we bore by that utility. So, those, those are kind of the same. So, I, I got a little bit off-topic there with your question, but I got rolling, so.
Mr. Sunday?
Can I follow up on that real quick? Um, I assume you have one centralized call center for customer issues?
You, you are incorrect.
Incorrect, okay, good.
We, we actually do a distributed model, so, um, we have actually customer service folks in all of our markets today. What we try to do is take the calls locally, uh, with our local, uh, customer service associates. That's not always feasible. Um, so we do have where it will roll over then and go to potentially somebody in Lincoln or somebody in North Platte or.
So, I'll ask the question that everybody's wondering, because we've all had the horror stories with your soon-to-be competitors here in the area with the wait times. So, what, what kind of wait times can we expect when we call ALO?
You know, typically, our wait times are less than a minute. I'm trying to think when that, that might, you know, we're not perfect. We can have outages like other folks. Now, our uptime is, is very, very good, uh, so that doesn't happen very often, but there, there, you know, everybody can have an outage where all of a sudden wait times would go up, and, you know, in those cases, we, we can have a little bit longer wait times. But the nice thing is, we call people in, and our, our, our teams are, are pretty resilient, so they get phone call, they'll come in and start answering phones.
And there was also an indication that you'll have a physical presence here, um, so like a storefront, so somebody could actually go in and talk to somebody as well?
Absolutely. We, we think that's important. Um, you know, it, it's part of our key to customer service. We're really firm believers in, you know, um, being part of the community, being your neighbors. And you can't do that from a, a call center that's maybe states away.
Appreciate it a lot.
Absolutely, thank you.
Been enjoyable to work with ALO as well through the, through this. Uh, engineering's had a lot of conversations, legal's had a lot of conversations, and, uh, been fantastic experience, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Edward Weniger, 1709 Ridgeview Drive. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing some competition to the, uh, internet market, so.
You're welcome. Thank you. Council discussion. Please vote.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes, and, uh, for council, I'm assuming you, you may be getting questions from constituents. ALO on their website has put up a Papillion page, and, um, an individual can actually register for updates. for updates. So probably to get the best project information of what's going on, would be for a constituent to actually register on that page, because then they'll be getting direct information from ALO for the Papillion project. But engineering will be staying updated, Public Works will be staying updated on what the design plan is too, so we'll keep you updated as, as the project continues. Item F three, ordinance nineteen fifty-eight, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial, for the property legally described as a replating of Outlot A, Steel Ridge South, together with the platting of Tax Lot two D, and Tax Lot nine of the northwest quarter of Section thirty-five Township fourteen north range eleven east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and those parts of the southwest quarter, southeast quarter, and northeast quarter of Section thirty-four Township fourteen north range eleven east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, lying south and east of Interstate eighty right-of-way, except those parts taken for road right-of-way, generally located south of Highway three seventy, between I eighty and one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth Street. The applicant's Dowd Grain Company, Steel Ridge South, phases two and three. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty-eight? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Sunday. The staff is recommending a motion to amend, due to the Steel Ridge South two and three preliminary plat, it was revised subsequent to the introduction, so to get the lot numbers synced up. And that was in the staff report. So, is there a motion to amend nineteen fifty-eight to revise the lot numbers to be consistent with the revised Steel Ridge South plat, preliminary plat?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents or opponents on the motion to amend? Any council, you want to talk on the motion to amend, or just the main one? All right. Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion, it is amended. Now, I'll call for proponents. Welcome. I'll apologize, you had to wait so long. We normally don't do too-long presentations, but they were both very important, and as a developer, I think you probably appreciated them.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's the first time in a while someone's told me a hearing like this to sit down, but we'll let that go. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city leadership team, I'm Jay Naughtle, with Naughtle Companies, twenty-two eighty-five South Sixty-seventh Street in Exarban Village, here on behalf of the applicant Dowd Grain Company. This is an exciting time for the Steel Ridge development, and for the city of Papillion. By your actions tonight, you make it possible for there to be a property transfer, and the commencement of construction of the next significant project in the Steel Ridge development. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Okay, so, Mr. Naughtle, last time you were down here, I think I asked you a question, and I tried to pry out of you, who was coming down here? And you were very restrained, you did not tell me, so I'm gonna ask you the same question tonight.
Well, I'd be happy to answer the question this evening.
Thank you, very much.
So this, this land will be for the future growth of Rotella's Italian Bakery. This does not mean a relocation from their current location to the east. However, it represents a site that is large enough to accommodate their growth for many decades. The first phase will be primarily distribution, and the investment of, in this first phase will be somewhere between seventy-five to eighty, or eighty-five million dollars. There's plenty of room for future phases, and in those future phases, there could be other uses. And in terms of the number of jobs, there'll be both FTEs, full-time employees, and part-time employees. There's, there's not a firm number yet. You can imagine that their tremendous growth, which is leading to the need for this facility, is going to result in some new jobs. However, technology may mitigate that a little bit. And so, the representatives of the company have just asked me to, to let you know, they're gonna be growing, they're bringing jobs to Papillion, they're not taking all the jobs away from their current location, and just as soon as they have a better handle on how many jobs this will be, I'm sure we'll, we'll all be made aware of that.
Appreciate that. They've been a great Sarpy business, so it seemed expanding, it's exciting. Any, any other council questions, Mr. Naughtle? Any other proponents or opponents? Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item F four, resolution R twenty-two zero one eight zero, resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of Lot A, Steel Ridge South, together with the platting of Tax Lot two D, Tax Lot nine of the northwest quarter, Section thirty-five Township fourteen north range eleven east of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and those parts of the southwest quarter, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section thirty-four Township fourteen north range eleven east of the six PM, lying south and east of Interstate eighty right-of-way, except those parts taken for road right-of-way, generally located south of Highway three seventy, between I eighty and one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth Street, the applicant's Dowd Grain Company, Steel Ridge South, Phase two. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty-two zero one eight zero? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilwoman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also a related item, thankfully, you don't have to read the legal. Resolution R twenty-two zero one eight one, a resolution to approve the first amendment to the Steel Ridge South subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve resolution R twenty-two zero one eight one?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. F six, ordinance nineteen seventy-seven, an ordinance to approve a purchase agreement with a manual for the sale of city property located near six-twenty West Lincoln Street. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen seventy-seven? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. I think we got some students with us. You guys got to come up and introduce yourselves, and we'll wait, so you all got to come up. Who are you, and why are you here? And you can go, you can just start lining up.
Well, I'm Anthony McGill, from Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here for my AP American Government Project, to go to a public policy meeting. So I've just been here taking notes on the, what's been going on.
Hey, welcome.
I'm Lily Cowg, I'm here also for American Government Class for projects, and taking notes, and, yeah.
Welcome.
I'm Caitlin Harris, and I'm here from AP Government Class, and I've just been taking notes, so.
Welcome. Glad Mr. Keller's, y'all with Mr. Keller's class? Glad he keeps doing that. One of the things we have on the agenda tonight, we'll hit it in just a minute, but since you are here, we'll have a closed session. And typically, the entire city council cannot go behind closed doors and talk, because it's outside the realm of the public. But if we're doing anything with real estate negotiations, or something like with a lawsuit or a personnel action, we can go behind closed doors to kind of get negotiation guidance, because you don't want the other side to know what you're talking about when you're figuring out your negotiation strategy. So we can go behind closed doors for those very narrow, specific items. But when we do that, we can take no votes behind closed doors. If there's a vote taken, it's got to be back out into the public. And then, because it is a closed session doing negotiation guidance, we actually can't talk about what we talked about. That would be a violation under state law, and be misdemeanor, so we do have one of those tonight, so you'll see that. So we'll disappear for a while, and you'll know why. We don't do it very often, but we got some real estate items. Any comments from the floor? Yes. When you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Richard Creek, twelve oh seven Rogers Drive. I hear there's a time limit, I was in the Christian ministry for thirty years, so I'll try my best.
Three minutes. I don't know what that translates to in the ministry side, though.
Okay, here we go. I bring an issue before you, of the trail that runs from Centennial and Eighty-fourth all the way east, is becoming a dangerous area in the community. There's not sufficient light. I called the city one time about this, and you don't start a conversation with me by saying, Mr. Creek, I don't think you understand. No, I understand that you have an issue here in the city. The same people that the schools spend an exorbitant amount of money on, and technology keep out of their buildings, are out in the streets and paths. There has been occasions where, at that park, I've seen instances where it was a see something, say something. Like a gentleman, bald gentleman, I can describe him to you, about six foot two, sitting on a picnic table, watching little children play. Maybe he was just resting, I don't know. But when you come down that trail in the evening, it's dark. And someone might say, well, there's city streetlights. Well, that doesn't affect the trail. Any of those big evergreens, someone could hide in there and pop out, and you're, you're gone. I understand, a few years ago, that happened, more towards Rogers Drive, a gentleman was accosted and beat up. With crime where it's at today, I, I just don't see where schools can spend millions of dollars, well-spent for security. I have grandkids, I worry about them every day. But those are the people that are out amongst us. And without sufficient light, I've talked to several people who walk that trail, I just stop them, and say, what do you think about this? And they said, man, it gets dark here, doesn't it? Really dark. And these are people that go there all the time. Or people who walk early in the morning before they go to work. There's fewer people out, but it's still dusk, I mean, or dawn, there's not sufficient I was, I was, I was an adventure runner for about twenty-five years, that's why I walked goofy coming up, because I have knees now that were replaced. But I enjoy getting outside and walking, and the people of the Hickory Hills area do just that. You'll see mothers pushing a baby carriage, and another one in this hand, walking along. You see people, older people, walking their dogs. I've always been kind of impressed with our neighborhood, that so many people do get out, and they use the trail. But I've also talked to people who have said to me, I don't go there anymore, it's, it's not worth it. So I'm just sharing that with you. I do understand, by the way, but it's a small amount of money to save the city and individuals using the park, not to come up to some kind of a lawsuit.
And you're talking specifically around Hickory Hill Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So when you go from the high school down, so I mean, there's all kinds of places for people to hide, and with crime, I mean, you know how crime is now, and y'all probably know more about what's going on in Papillion than I do. But it's a simple request, and I just wanted to make it known, and I think I just spent three minutes, so I don't know where you go from here, but maybe somebody could consider Maybe even solar-powered lights, if those were available. What I was told I didn't understand was, you got to hook meters up, and they got to do it through O P P D, might have to put up poles, and they're like, look dude, I know how that works, pole, lines, light. I get it. But I thank you for your time, I appreciate if you at least think about it, and if there's something that can be done, Mr. Mayor, let it be done.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor? If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Brittany Holtmeyer, two oh seven Ridgeview Drive. Sorry I was late, I was at the Papillion versus Papillion game, and then I had to book here. I just kind of wanted to give an input on what Dr. Rickley was saying about the enrollment. If you do go to the Papillion La Vista Community School website, and look at the data enrollment, you will notice that it's down. We have put together a chart, and I can send it in an email to each one of you. So some observations are, the total enrollment is increased by eighty-four students, ideal increase by ten. Ten of the sixteen elementary schools have decreased in enrollment. Six elementary schools have increased with the two single digits. One of the three middle schools is increased, and both of the high schools have decreased. I do also remember coming last time, I believe, when the developer was here for, right by Trumbull, and also talking to him, and asking him if he had an idea of how many children these houses would bring in. And I believe he said he didn't know, because they can be houses from one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar house, because then, he said, they could have their own developer for a house, if I'm correct, is what he had said? Yes. So, with that, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, I feel isn't normally your typical starter home, so therefore, these children, maybe middle or high school, but they're gonna be gone in a couple of years anyways. So, I just encourage you to do your research, and go to the site, and look at the data, and you can see it for yourself, it's on their own website. And just per his comment, I don't know if he used the word TIF, for what the TIRF had brought in, the Titan Performance Center. Unfortunately, that uproar didn't have to happen. If the board would have held Dr. Rickley accountable, we would not be having such a division between Papillion Monarchs versus Titans. We don't need that, we are one. So I just wanted to let you know that they did violate a policy on that, Policy fourteen oh nine, with fundraising. So, anything that is over fifty thousand dollars, it needs to have board approval, and this was stated in emails that we have gotten from public records requests, and they didn't hold him accountable. They let it go. So, if you want to view those, they're on papillionpatriots.org, and I just highly encourage you guys to do that, and I will email you this chart as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the public, if they're listening, the city council has no authority over the school board, so if there was a violation, you'll want to report that somewhere else, because we don't have authority to address that.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, we, yeah, we have, I just wanted to inform everybody. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Council comments? Mr. Memgarden.
I just wanted to follow up on something that was mentioned by the city administrator. The Downtown Business Association is once again putting on their, their spook and sip celebration, and it is once again sold out, year after year. That is now being sold out. That is a fantastic event that they're bringing in. I think that is starting to reach the level of Papillion Days in Winter Wonderland to some extent. It's bringing huge amounts of people, largely from outside the city of Papillion, into downtown Papillion. It's a, it's a great event. Once again, I was too late, I don't have my ticket, but I've been, I've been down there and watched, and I just want to commend the Downtown Business Association for what they're doing. That is a fantastic event, and thank everybody who's putting that on.
And they're being very active. Mr. Green mentioned, he went to their monthly meeting last night, and the attendance is growing down there, so the businesses are really getting engaged, so really appreciate that. Just a couple things from the last couple of weeks. League of Municipalities, we had a legislative meeting for the large cities in Nebraska. And again, I think it's just a good reminder for council, if there is something at a legislative level, that either you want tracked, or you have an idea of legislation, let us know, and we can be working with the United Cities and the League as well on those items, so keep us updated if there's anything there. We've had two recent ribbon cuttings, Pop and Smoke at the American Legion, that's become a very popular place, and then Talis at one-hundred-and-eighth and three-seventy. So if you hear that Papillion doesn't have a lot of food options, we just had two ribbon cuttings for local, high-quality food, so that's a great thing. Scouts were here tonight, that's always a fun thing. And as long as ALO is still here, and just a reminder for the public, we've been talking about trying to have fiber for years. There was a previous telecommunications company that located Papillion, and if people remember Doc Winiger, he worked for them, and I think Mr. Ingberg and I had some conversations with him way back then, of is there anything we can do to get fiber here? And I think part of that relationship might have paid off, because Doc now works for ALO, and he's been in some of these meetings, so it's finally coming to fruition, from what we talked about quite a while ago, so I'm very excited again for that. We do have a closed session tonight. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss real estate negotiations?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
To the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss real estate negotiations. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, deputy administrator of community development, city attorney, and parks and facilities director. Closed session will include the mayor, city council, city administrator, deputy city administrator, deputy administrator of community development, city attorney, and Parks and Facilities Director. I will restate, the only topic discussed in closed session was real estate negotiations. We got a motion and a second motion by Gaines, second by Klug? Any discussion? Please vote. We're voting to come out. Mr. Sunday? Vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Klug? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.